This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're going to start all this over. It is now 6:30 PM September the 9th, 2021. We are beginning the regular meeting of the Rome City Council, and it is an in-person meeting. The first one may be in 10 months or more. So, we appreciate everyone that's in the audience, and we also appreciate those that have come in with live streaming or calling in. We do have a quorum here. Do we need to name the quorum for Shannon?
It's not necessary, Mayor. They're all here.
Okay, we have a... Every council person is here. We will now call for invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Josh McKay.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all gather here this evening. Please bless us and take care of us throughout the night. Bless us with calm words, open minds. And as we go into this weekend, please remember all families and friends and everyone affected on that tragic day 20 years ago. In your Lord's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before you sit down, let's also say a pledge in honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, Shannon, do we have anyone for public presentation and input?
Yes, ma'am. We have quite a few tonight. The first one is Terri Priest.
Okay, before Terri talks, I'd like to remind everyone, when you're not speaking, please mute your mic. We have new equipment we're working with, and if that works, it will certainly help everybody.
Good evening. My name is Terri Priest. I live at 216 Cheyenne Trail North, Rome, Texas. I'm a retiree who loves gardening, and I share my passion by volunteering for the city. Unfortunately, faults and libel accusations have been posted on Rome Watch. It is my understanding that Patricia Mitchell is the administrator of this Facebook group. I submit a package that gives chronological steps taken to plan and execute an event to raise funds for the City Beautification Fund along with support documentation. Every step can be verified by the city administrator, city attorney, city secretary, and/or mayor Wilson. Prior to January 8th, 2021, the city administrator was asked to verify if it was permissible to conduct a plant sale for the benefit of the beautification fund so that if grants were awarded, matching funds would be available and to verify the city's pavilion could be used as the location for the event. The pavilion seemed to be the best location because it is open air due to the COVID protocol, has cover from the weather, is handicap accessible, has parking, and has restrooms. The city attorney reviewed appropriate ordinances and confirmed both matters. January 8th, 2021, the application to use the pavilion was completed. The event was scheduled for April 10th, 2021, as it was the optimum time for plants to be planted before the summer heat began. The application would not have been approved if the city attorney had not confirmed the pertinent information. Near the 1st of April, Mayor Wilson asked that the plant sale be canceled due to the upcoming election. This information was relayed by the city administrator. Even though the event was not political and met the conditions of city ordinances, it was rescheduled for June 5th, 2021, and on April 5th, 2021, a second application was used... For the use of the pavilion was completed. Deborah B. Kraft made an open record request regarding this matter on April 5th, 2021. Prior to the June 5th event, the city administrator was asked to reach out to the city attorney for a second opinion. Again, it was confirmed as legal. Numerous supporters witnessed the sale, and all proceeds were counted onsite totaling $326. It was delivered to the city on Monday, June 7th. A receipt is attached. All expenses were paid out of pocket as a donation. Currently, plants are being propagated for the 2022 event. It is important to me that the city council and the city of Rome know that I did not disrespect the community or break any laws or being a thief. I do not understand why this personal attack has occurred. I only want Rome to be beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next one I will be reading.
My name is Glenda Mason, and I live at 200 Clear Fork Trail, Rome. On June 5th, I helped with the plant sale that raised money for the city's beautification fund. I was one of several people that helped Terri Priest with the fundraiser by donating plants, planting them weeks in advance, setting up and helping with the sale. Some volunteers wintered over plants, others donated plants. Terri provided plant containers, bought potting soil, fertilizer, and paid for the signs that went up. Even though it rained hard that morning, many folks came to buy plants. And every current city council member came by, some bought plants and/or raised plants. It was a success, and we are already working on the next event. I was very upset to read the post on Rome Watch, which was totally untrue. It made me angry because the post defamed not only Terri and Elaine Priest, but it defamed all of us who volunteered. And even more, it defamed the city of Rome, stating the process to have a sale or use the pavilion had not been followed. I would like to say the post is shameful, but I don't believe the author feels shame at all. "A trail of non-factual and demeaning entries" is this Facebook's group claimed to fame. Terri Priest has no hidden agendas. He loves to garden. He always gives the best of himself throughout the community. Truly, Rome Watch chose the wrong person to print lies about. I ask Rome Watch to step up and post an apology. Admit you posted information that was hurtful and untrue. It is the very least you can do. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion. Glenda Mason.
The next one is Kathy Coffey, and she will be calling in. Ms. Coffey, are you on the streaming?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Say what?
Yes, ma'am. When you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy Coffey, and I live on Mount Lake. What I'm about to say is my own opinion as a citizen of Rome. First, I would like to thank the council and Cynthia for providing live virtual meetings during the in-person council sessions. Thank you to our city administrator and our staff for the continued improvements on the city website. Cynthia has done a wonderful job of posting all meetings, not only of council, but PMZ and Park and Rec as well on YouTube. In my opinion, we have a responsibility to spread the word to our citizens about this service and encourage them to watch and/or listen to these meetings to understand how and why certain things are being done. We have important issues to be voted on in November, and this is an excellent resource to hear the facts and not twisted rumors and half truths. No employee is receiving a 20% plus raise. No citizen violated any city ordinance for a plant sale and pocketed the money. A new police chief was not hired because of any friendship with anyone or council or in Rome. There is no plot for a council member to resign and have anyone else appointed. These fabrications are only a way to distract citizens from the true facts and support their own agenda. Please, if you cannot attend a meeting in person or virtually, check out YouTube. Click search and type "city of Rome." Hear what really happened for yourself so informed decisions can be made on the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is another presentation that I'll be reading. "It is so good to have open meetings back, and hopefully we all can all remain safe. It is a time the city can begin to return to normal, and as the seasons turn and the weather becomes cooler, hopefully citizens can see the city once again begin fall and winter festivities. Let's become a community once again. As seen on many social media sites regarding a Bywell Estates Park, it is apparent that not all citizens welcome such a place. Some may want it, and others do not. That being pointed out, why would the Parks Committee and/or city still insist on pushing it on the Bywell residence? Wouldn't that money be better spent repairing roads and maybe even putting the recently installed utility posts underground? Also, if we are having to borrow money for a road pothole maintenance, would that not be a better use of the money at this time? If a park is built that would put additional work on public works employees to keep it pristine, is that what we want to do? Great things are happening. QT is coming soon, adding to our tax revenue and bringing several drops. Other businesses hopefully will soon follow. Thanks, Lisa Ann Wilson, West First, Rome, Texas." Ma'am, that is all that I have for citizen presentations.
Your mic? Your mic? He's my personal mic. Turn her on or off in case you'll wonder on the thing. I'm getting with this program. Okay, we're going to move. We've had your public presentations, and we have now announcements from the mayor and from the council. Will we okay, Shannon? That's fine, yeah. Okay. 9/11, 20 years ago, tragedy strike. On American soul, we lost so many. Do you remember where you were on that awful day? Keep all those lost in your prayers and also their family. Also, we have our own first responders, some of which are here tonight. Please let them know how proud we are of them and keep them in your prayers. This Saturday, 9/11, there will be an anniversary remembrance at 9:00 AM at the fire station hosted by the Rome Police Department and the Rome Fire Department. Honor our first responders by your presence. Next reminder that Renee Bates' option for the Rome Police is ongoing. Info is on the city of Rome webpage. Lastly, the Rome veterans will have a booth at the Paradise Main Street Festival, 9:25. Go by and show your support. And come again to this nice meeting room we have now, Monday, September the 13th, 5:00 PM. Planning and zoning meeting will be here. Thursday, September the 23rd, we'll have another open council meeting at 6:30. We'd love to have all of y'all there. And do we have any council people that would like to make an announcement or comment? Yes. Elaine Priest.
My announcement is the city of Rome has met an ADA requirement that was not previously met. We have a new sound system. The old system was challenging. But our new system isn't just a sound system. It works directly with other equipment that allows the city to livestream its meetings so that Rome citizens can participate in person or virtually. Also, all meetings are recorded and can be seen on YouTube. But here's the bonus. Most are aware this building is not ADA compliant, and cities are not exempt from those requirements. However, cities are allowed to provide alternative methods to assist folks who are not able to attend city meetings, especially the handicapped. The city of Rome is meeting that ADA requirement by utilizing live streaming. Whether someone is disabled, a veteran can access the building, temporarily sick, recovering from surgery, can't drive at night, out of town, must stay at home to care for others, the list goes on. Now, we can all participate live. Our new system addresses discrimination. So, yes, our system costs a little more than just a sound system, but is money well spent because it goes better... It gives us better representation opportunities for the citizens of Rome regardless of their personal situations. Thank you to the staff for your time and effort to make this happen.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We only have one item. It is the minutes of the city council regular session, August 26. Shannon, this shows you is action.
The draft minutes are in front of you in your packet, and staff recommends approval.
Do I hear anyone to recommend that we approve these?
I think a motion to approve them.
Ashley is seconding. So, let's have a vote. We do not have to have a roll call vote. We can do pen votes. So, who all is in favor of accepting these minutes? It's 100% in favor. Raised hand, I am accepting. So, the minutes have been approved, Shannon.
May be easier for everyone on this as far as the audience online if they go ahead and verbalize their response.
We can do that from now on.
Would that not break the microphones, having all of them on at the same time? Or then we're talking about going one at a time again? Okay.
I'm just very cognizant of, you know, people that are watching it live because I watched the park board. We had more than one hiccup. But it's frustrating when you're watching and you can't really hear. I mean, they can see you. But even if one or two had the mic on or the mayor had the mic on, they might hear some of that bleeding over.
So, what are you suggesting? That we do or do not have a voice vote?
It's up to you, Mayor. I would suggest both. And even just with one mic on, I mean, they might hear it bleed over.
Mayor, I think generally you can recognize if it's a unanimous, if it's like it's an agenda or something that's pretty simple, you can take a hand vote, and you just acknowledge the vote was unanimous and the motion carries. And if it's a four to one or something like that, you can also make that announcement. The vote was four to one, the motion carries. That, I think, should clarify the record. If there's any question.
And I think Josh has got a good point about feedback, you know, if we all have our mics on.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Make it easy. Could Shannon not say, "Josh said aye," to make it just one mic instead of doing all mic where Shannon could just say, "Josh, I said aye," or something, just one mic? Could it make it easier?
That's where we were talking that we... Is since we're in person, we can all say aye at the same time. That way, it saves time, and we don't have to have somebody roll call. So, I think to make it easy, if our mayor says, "Everybody vote aye," everybody says aye, they'll hear it over her microphone or a little bit. We can raise hands at the same time, nay. That way, we can move on, make it short and easy.
Okay, we'll give that a shot when we move on down here. Okay, we have the month of...
I'm sorry. Yes, Shannon. While we're talking about this, would you be able to say who stated the motion and who seconded? That way, we can hear it on the media as well.
Yeah, Sam made the motion. Ashley seconded.
Thank you, ma'am.
On the thing. Okay, we have the monthly staff reports and board minutes. Does anyone want to pull anything off of that? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close this meeting temporarily at 6:50 PM and move into a public hearing at 6:51 PM. The Rome City Council is to conduct a public hearing to hear citizen input regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022. Do we have anybody that wants to comment, Shannon?
Yes, ma'am. I do... I did receive one and asked to be read in. "Be glad our tax rate did not increase this year, and we have, in fact, a 0.2 cent decrease. Do not spend all of this savings yet. When your tax bill comes from the county, it will include Rome taxes. Should your appraisal value increase, your tax bill will reflect that. Be prepared. As you are aware, the tax rate for the city cannot be compared to another city. It is like comparing apples and oranges. We do not know what their needs or expectations are. Rome stands alone. Thanks, Lisa Ann Wilson, West First."
Anyone else?
Ma'am, that was all I received.
That's it? Okay. It is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience or sitting at the table is allowed to speak. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, we're going to stop the public hearing at 6:52 PM and move back into our regular agenda at 6:52 PM. We're under the regular new business discussion and necessary action regarding ordinance 2021-18 adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, you have the proposed budget again in front of you. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer those. I don't have a presentation. I've made quite a few. Seems like I've been talking about this since March. So, unless you have any questions for me.
Have there been any changes since the last meeting?
There was one adjustment, and it was just a typo. So, no.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept this budget. Elaine Priest made the motion. And do I have a second?
I got to sit up in 18, and there was nobody there.
Made the second.
I was wondering why they didn't.
So, let's all go with a voice vote.
I was sitting next to...
This is the roll call vote that we need.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I almost entered a meeting in my ear.
Let's go back. Okay, Shannon, you get to do your thing this time. Excuse me? Number 10 to 19. Councilmember aye. Councilmember Priest, aye. Councilmember Eason? Councilmember Majors? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to move to item F.
I could not hear anything.
You need to put your mic on.
Somebody's talking and laughing, and I can't hear what y'all are saying.
Whenever we were tagging, I felt the plane start to... I was like, uh-oh. And then whenever we missed flight, and it felt like we dropped like 500 feet.
Yeah, it scared the crap out of me.
I just liked how we dropped like... It felt like 500 feet. It didn't seem to see the... The seatbelt button went off.
Scared the crap out of me.
Did send it real quick or what? But like, I cannot... I could not hear anything.
No.
Just take a moment, mute them all.
Yeah. We're working through announced new sound system. And everyone that's online in any manner, please make sure and mute your phone, your video, your computer, whatever you're using because we're getting feedback. Okay, we're moving on now. Do we need to move directly into F now, Cynthia? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion and any necessary action regarding ordinance number 2021-19 ratifying ad valorem property tax revenue reflected in the adopted fiscal year October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022 annual budget. City Administrator will handle this.
City Administrator, you've got a typo in the agenda that refers to September 30th, 2021.
Yeah, and that's why I read 2022.
Right. Wanting to have the typo.
You gonna give me those receipts or...
Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry. So, this is... This budget... This agenda item is ratifying the ad valorem property tax revenue. So, if you remember, the voter approval rate was .450858 for 100 valuation. And the proposed tax rate that you guys are setting this at is 4.450857, just under the voter approval rate. And the no new revenue rate is .446273. And this tax rate is approximately 2 cents lower than the current rate of .477694.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this new tax rate.
Sir, there is a motion that needs to be stated. It's on page 55 of your packet.
On the agenda commentary.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate which is effectively a 1.03% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you. Your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
Now it is. And government... Do we need a roll call on this one? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second that we accept this tax rate. Do I hear a voice vote for this? Okay, so unanimous, Shannon. Everyone voted aye.
Who made the motion and who seconded?
Okay, Sam made the motion, Elaine seconded. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a police chief here? There he is. Okay. We're going down to item G. Discussion and necessary action regarding an interlocal agreement with the city of Frisco in authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, other council members, city administrator. What this interlocal agreement would do is allow us to use the purchasing power of the city of Frisco and get a deep discount on uniforms purchased through Galls Uniform Supply Company. So we're just asking for your support to enter into that local agreement so that we can save some money in our budget on uniform supply.
Is this just for police uniforms, or can Chief Fitch benefit from it, or?
I don't know. I entered this as police, but if they are interested in.
Okay.
They have a different buying power than we do.
Oh.
So this will allow us to.
As long as we can save a dollar, that's what we need to do, you know? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's what this is for, to save the citizens and our departments some money.
So do I hear a motion that we authorize the city administrator to enter into this agreement and all necessary documents? Ashley is saying yes. Are you wanting a question or? Okay. Ashley's making a motion that we accept it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, Josh, I'm gonna let you be second, because Sam's been in there before. Okay, we're going. Yeah. Everybody in favor, please say aye. Again, this passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, item H is discussion and necessary action regarding future uses of the senior building and police department post-bond election. I personally think this is premature and should not be discussed until our first November meeting. Council, you can do what you choose.
So does that mean I can continue, or?
Uh, Mayor, I would just like to remind all the council members. You are not allowed to advocate for the passage or defeat of the bond. It has, this is not an appropriate thing to do. It's against the law. As, as I helped draft this particular agenda item, I used the reference to the bond election as a date reference. So really, it is a, and after that point, what are you gonna do? And that's how you should use any references to the bond. But you should not be discussing the bond either for or against.
Not a problem. Because the bond is really not my, my point in this discussion at all. So as city council members, we are constantly looking for ways to do two things. Meet the city's needs and to use money wisely. I want to talk about two of our facilities that help us as we look at these needs and money. From our previous experience, we know that keeping deteriorating buildings while being used and are vacant is not a way to save money. We know the longer we wait to address situations, the more buildings deteriorate and the more they cost. So no action actually costs money. So that's, that is the perspective that I want to talk about, the senior building. For as long as I've been on the council, it has been pointed out that its location compromises two things. Safety of parking, or the lack thereof, and the fire department's egress and ingress. Also, the building is in poor condition, and it's not up to code. And the seniors have been invited to use the Marie Moore Community Educational Center. One estimate to repair that would be about $22,000, just for a bare minimum, focusing primarily on the electrical stuff. A more comprehensive improvement plan for the building is more likely to be about $50,000. And part of this conundrum that I'm painting a picture of here is the sentimental feelings about the old classroom. For as long as I've been here, the topic of demolishing the building because of the confinement of, of the restriction to the fire department and parking, et cetera, has been going on these last three years. But I would like to discuss another option. Maybe we could sell the building so that it could be moved and repurposed at a different location. The demolition cost is estimated to be about $15,000. So that money could be saved, and also maybe there could be cash from a sale. The logistics in considering such a thing would be, what is that process exactly that a municipality would have to do to sell the property? And what was the timeline to complete that process? We would look at the timeline depending on how the elections turn out in November so that we could time that appropriately, depending on those outcomes. It's possible to take these, and it's possible that even if we took the steps to investigate and possibly try to save the building by selling it so that we can improve this condition that we need in front of this building, because it's gonna be used no matter what, it's possible that there might not be a buyer. And if that was to happen, then we would just have to reevaluate what we could or couldn't do. So what I'm really asking tonight is, can we not investigate? Can we not look into an alternative way to save some money, meet our needs, and save that building by possibly selling it and asking the buyer then to relocate it and repurpose the building? So that is my comments on that. And as far as action that I would be requesting, I would ask the city council to take some action to proceed with selling and saving the community senior building with a stipulation that the buyer must relocate the building within 10 days of closing the sale and authorize the city administrator and city attorney to move forward toward that end. So that would be what we could do. Of course, if we go through the sale process, we don't have to take a bid that we wouldn't find appropriate. So we were not committed absolutely to that. It's more about having a strategy so that we can save money and save the building. So that's my comments on that building. Your mic.
I wish I bought a bullhorn. I think I remember to use it. I apologize to y'all.
I think there's a question behind you, ma'am.
Yes, Michelle.
So would this happen whether the bond passes or not? Is that your idea? You wanted to sell it whether the bond passes or not?
I want to save it.
Save it. Yeah, save it and relocate it.
That's correct, because no matter what, this building is gonna be used. You know, this, this is gonna be used. The fire department is gonna be used. And so from a fire department safety issue for them to get in and out, the building is just sitting in the wrong location. For additional parking, as we continue to use this building, we don't have all that much, and as we go, have more and more people come back to live meetings and for the other purposes that this building's used for, for municipal court and those other things. And hopefully, the seniors will be using this building as well. You know, we, we need some more adequate and safe parking for those, those events that take place in this building. P&amp;Z, I think, meets here. I think, matter of fact, I think every meeting is here. And so I just, the idea of just tearing it down and, and bulldozing it and putting it in a big trash can and hauling it off, I, I just couldn't. I just can't, I just don't want that to happen. I would rather see it be repurposed and somebody use it. But at the same time, save us money that we don't, so we don't have to spend 15 grand to have it demolished and put in that trash can. So that's what I'm thinking.
And were you going to address the police building also?
Right, and.
Before we, before we go there, are you, are you asking for action by the council tonight to say authorize the city administrator to look into buyers? Or are you just saying, you know what, it's a, it's a nice old building and, you know, maybe we could do this someday? What, are, are you looking for us to take action now to authorize the city administrator?
And, and the city attorney, yes. So part of the discussion, I think, is, you know, do, I guess, do you agree with my suggestion? I'm just, I'm trying to get outside the box to save money and save that building.
I like the suggestion, okay? Saving, potentially saving the building by allowing some private citizens to invest, I think is good. I'm concerned, what is the advantage of now versus the first meeting in November after the election?
I think, I think there is a timeline to consider. You know, how long do we want to wait on safety issues? We've waited a long time already. I think we probably would have dealt with this already if we hadn't had, you know, 18 months of sabbatical due to, to COVID. You know, there's just things that didn't happen during that process. The other thing is, you know, if the bond does happen to pass, which doesn't make any difference as far as the need to relocate the building, then how is the, how would the sale fit into the timeline of the construction if that was, if that scenario happened? So I don't, I don't think to procrast, I think procrastinating might cause a hiccup if we, if we waited a couple of months, depending on the process. And I'm sure our attorney's gonna, you know, help us understand the process to sell.
Ash, I'm sorry. Ashley?
Carvin, I am so surprised you let this be on the agenda when it's so close for the bond. Because I'm not, I mean, I am surprised when it's in the plans and everything for their mega complex drawings. So I'm disappointed in you for this. So, I mean, no, 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 I'm not finished, because this is, I mean, this is something that we need to, I think we need to put on the back burner. Yes, it's something that's been sitting there. And what are you planning on moving it to? I mean, we all want to save it because it's been here. I mean, we love the building and everything, but you just said it's 20, 22,000 and 55,000. But this is something I think that maybe needs to address after your hefty, hefty, uh, election. So this isn't, because I, yes, am not in favor for your bond. I can say that, and I apologize. So, Carvin, you shouldn't have put it on there. So I won't say another thing about it.
Well, I stand my, my decision to authorize the publishing of the agenda as drafted. And I will just also add to it, we did run this language specifically by our bond council, who also approved it. So I feel fairly confident that we're okay. Again, I would caution you, the discussion should not be for or against the election. But as long as you're discussing about expenditures of funds at some future date, I don't see that as advocating for or against.
Right, which I understand, her for expenditures. But Elaine, where do you plan on, we love the building. It's for miss, you know, for the senior citizens. But we, in the past, have spoken about it for how expensive it is to fix it up. We don't have the money. I say in just last council meeting how I wanted for the, you know, employees to make, you know, more money and to have, you know, for our insurance, for their insurance and everything. I want different things to be, you know, our budget to be lean. So, but now you want to look into the senior citizens' building? That maybe we should wait to see where in our budget that we don't have that to be fixed, the 22,000? I think we need to hold off on it. But I'm the Lone Ranger to my vote, so do what you need, so.
I, I want to chime in here real quick, and I have a couple of thoughts. Uh, one, since it was brought up, this is not the time or place to be admonishing any of our city staff or those members. That is, the proper thing for this meeting right here is for us to have discussions for on, what's on the agenda between the council, not telling somebody we're disappointing them. No, you can wait. Secondly, no, you can wait, Ms. Majors. I have the floor.
Hey, let's, let's get back to the call.
You're not gonna scream at me, Mr. Protem. You are not gonna scream at me. So do not put your hand up and scream at me.
Then you need to respect the rules.
No, I was holding my hand up to go next. You're not gonna raise your hand at me and scream next, since you're Mr. Protem. Have respect.
Hey, guys, I don't want to have to ask y'all to leave the meeting. Y'all, it's one talk at a time. And Elaine basically started this conversation. Let's see what her comment is.
My own? Yes, ma'am. Okay. I didn't, in my comments, I did not suggest that we spend any money. I was just recalling what the estimates were that we got earlier, as, as we got estimates on all the buildings, to bring them up to code. My suggestion was only to sell the building to someone else who would repurpose the building. And the way they repurpose that is to move it off of this location, clear the spot, take it to their own personal property, and, and to repurpose that building. We do not have a use for that building at this time. There's no plan for it if the seniors are gonna meet here. We would not have to pay any money for the rehabilitation. We would not have to pay any money to move it. We would sell it with the condition that it had to be moved. That would then clear the pathway here for the fire department, would give us additional parking. And, and we would not need then to spend about $15,000 to demolish it. And we would need not, we would not need to spend about somewhere between 22,000 and 50,000 to remodel it. So my purpose here is to save the building, sell it to someone else who moves it and repurposes it, and that we don't have any expenditures on that building. Our only other choice is for us to keep the building, demolish it, or fix it. And so I was looking for a way, hopefully, that we met the goals, that we need to improve access and use of this building, the fire department, not have these expenditures. And maybe we could actually even pick up a few dollars if it was to sell. So I wanted to restate, I was not in favor of bringing, of improving it and then selling it.
Elaine, um, so you're really not making this prop, this proposal as to whether the, any of the bonds in November pass or fail?
That's right.
This is completely independent of those bonds?
Absolutely.
What you're saying is, we've got a building, building right across the parking lot, building right across the parking lot, sorry, that it's not cost-effective to bring it up to code, to bring it up to ADA compliance, to bring it up to actually, you know, where it can be legally up to code and used. know, where it can be legally up to code and usable, that the value of the building is just not gonna ever meet what it would cost to bring it up to that. And so, I think that if that's true, and based upon some of the estimate, estimates I've seen, and that is true, then why not look at, you know, finding a way to make a few dollars for the city if, if someone's interested? Okay? This is not trying to, you know, propose one way or the other with any of the bonds in November. This is merely, we have an asset, well, we have a liability. Okay? And Elaine, I appreciate that you're trying to remove that liability from our books.
Let me ask, Carvin, can we sell the building and tell them what to do with it? I don't think so.
Well, the devil will be in the details.
Yeah.
Uh, to put that kind of condition will obviously reduce the potential buyers out there, because obviously you tell somebody what to do with an item that they buy when their normal expectation is to do with it what they want to, that will greatly limit the number of people that are interested in buying it. But it can theoretically be added to the contract and could be done.
Okay. So, you want?
Elaine, Elaine, thank you for reiterating.
Elaine, you want to ask for a vote at this point, or you want to talk about the police building also?
Mayor, if I could, I didn't get to my second point earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Priest, I, I think having a game plan is a great idea, you know, no matter the outcome come November. It doesn't hurt to put something together, whether it goes either way, we know what we're gonna do in the future. Um, so I don't know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we don't need to take action for y'all to do that? I think what we just need to do is instruct the staff to look into possibilities or options of what it is, do like a small project, and then present that to the council with the different possibilities. Is that, or would you need a vote on that to do something?
I don't think you need a vote on that. I mean, I think that's incumbent in the city administrator's duties to evaluate assets of the city and make recommendations to you periodically about the best use of them, so.
Okay, good answer.
I, this microphone on and off thing, uh, I apologize for being slow about that. Um, I, you know, I want to do what the council wants to do. Unfortunately for me, I'm one of those brainstormer people, like, it's a, it's a curse sometimes. But I, I just couldn't, in good conscience, at least not bring this up, um, because it is an alternative way. As a matter of fact, I have to be honest, a, a citizen asked me, why are you not talking about looking at this option? And I go, I have to think that through, you know? How would that affect the big picture of things? And how would that be executed? And what, I probably knew just enough to be dangerous, you know, kind of thing. Um, but if there was an opportunity for us to not have these expenditures, save some money, uh, no matter the outcomes, but yet improve the, the safety and save the building, then I, I looked at it as a lot of wins, you know, for most everybody concerned, and so, um, I don't have a problem with, uh, the administrator and the, and the attorney doing their homework and coming back. But I, I don't want us to wait so long that the, the building gets worse, because if we do decide we want to take action on this, the faster we can settle it, the better condition it's in, because we know the longer it sits there, the worse it gets.
Okay, what about the police department? You had tagged that also.
Right, and.
Isn't that a separate agenda item? Don't we need to finish this one?
No, they're both actually underh, Sam.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and I would like to say that this is strictly, uh, an investigative suggestion, and it would, uh, be a, a post-November election opportunity, but it's just, uh, I wanted to introduce the thought. The second building, I have to get where I can get light here. Uh, I also request that we take, uh, a look at investing, investigating the possibility of selling the current police department facility if the department is relocated. The property needs a tremendous amount of work just to save it in its current configuration. To demolish it would be very expensive because it needs mitigation. If you, if you're not aware of it, there is asbestos, um, in that building as well. Uh, there are no future plans for that building, and we know to harbor deteriorating buildings as a financial nightmare. So to sell prime commercial property would generate monies from the sale, perpetuate community property tax, I mean, uh, commercial property tax, and, uh, generate possible point of sale tax revenue. Plus, we would not spend money to renovate it or demolish it. Additionally, costs for maintenance and insurance would be eliminated from the city's budget. I just want to bring that forward as a thought process. I'm not suggesting that we need to take any action. It's just, I just wanted folks to think about this out-of-the-box thing as well. Looking for ways to get rid of buildings that are deteriorating and that can make money for the city.
Cynthia, are you agreeable to step in yourself looking into this to make us some money?
Well, we, we can definitely explore that. Um, I think, you know, Carvin was accurate when he said the devil's in the details, but we can definitely do that. I mean, I've heard what the, the goal is, and so I'll explore it in concert with the attorney and, uh, bring you back some thoughts, options.
Sounds good.
Hey, I guess maybe I'll add it to the agenda next week. But Cynthia, will you add this property, the whole, um, old school, add this property since QuickTrip's coming in? It'd be a great commercial property. I'll add it to the agenda next week, the property here. I'll add this property into it.
We'll get to a future agenda item later.
I'll get to future agenda items, yes.
Yeah, we can address that later.
Okay, we're gonna move.
On this current item?
I'm sorry, Sam.
On this current agenda item? Um, I think it's a little premature to look at selling any real estate that the city owns, because when you look around, um, the city of Rome doesn't own much, okay? And, okay, we may want to get some money, okay? And we, you know, because every, it'd be, it'd be wonderful to have a lot, a lot more money, and we wouldn't have to have any taxes at all. The thing is, we're not gonna sell any of the real estate that we have for really that much money long-term. So, in that, I know it's, we're, we're looking at like the police department, what is, what's it gonna cost to renovate, refurbish, make compliant, what, whatever terms you want to use? But that's still land. I mean, we're not making any more land. And when you start looking at the prices of land, it only goes up. So if, in the future, if we start needing things like, maybe we want some land where we want to build a recreation center, okay? It'd be nice to have some land, okay? Because whatever the short-term gain is, I don't think we really want to be looking into selling real estate. Now, selling a building that's, we can't afford, we're not actually selling any land with that.
You're my mayor.
Now, Sam, are you looking at selling, I mean, I'm looking, but considering maybe selling the police building but not the land it's on?
No, I'm saying that we're looking, it's apples and oranges. When you talk about the senior center.
No, I'm talking about police, yeah.
I understand, I understand, but when you're talking about the senior center, we're definitely not talking about selling land. When you're looking at the police department, I believe you're talking about selling land, because nobody's gonna want to buy the buildings. There's no historic value for the, what's in the, where the police department is right now. So, no, I'm not talking about selling the building. I'm saying.
Well, you're talking.
I personally don't think we should be entertaining selling that piece of, that, that property.
Okay, any other comments?
So just to be clear, what I'm hearing you all say that you want me to do is, um, and this is what I, her council member Priest say on the police department, is that was more of a thought-provoking, um, action, activity. Um, but on the senior building, um, because no matter what happens, it's a liability, and, um, we can save money and we can, um, add additional parking and potentially save, preserve the building, um, if we can find a, an appropriate option for that. Am I understanding my orders correctly? Okay.
Elaine, would you also want her to look at selling the building, clearing the land, if it doesn't look like anybody's interested in repurposing it?
Are you talking the police department right now?
Huh?
Are you talking about the police department right now?
No, ma'am, the senior building.
We're talking just selling the building is my suggestion.
Yeah, but rather than selling it to be repurposed, if she say she'd find a buyer that wanted the red bricks?
You know, if we sold the building, once we would sell the building and they got it off the property, how they would repurpose that building would be their decision. So maybe they, they would, would be buying it for the bricks. Maybe they want to salvage it.
Right.
I, you know, unfortunately, I told you I'm cursed with this. I look at that building and I go, if I had a little small lake property, that would be a great building to renovate and make into a small cabin. I mean, you know what I'm saying? And then I, I go, oh, get, get out of that business, so you know, don't, don't go there. But I'm just saying, it has potential, if somebody's a do-it-yourself kind of person, to make that into something that's usable, and they won't have to worry about city codes and compliances and stuff like that, that we, that we must do.
Well, we don't really care what they do with the building, and I guess it's one of the here.
I don't think that we can restrict what they do with it once we leave, it's removed from the premises.
We can add that language, but it gets very difficult to enforce.
Yeah.
I'll just explore the options and see what I can find out and, um, bring some information back to you all.
And we're gonna leave the police property alone at this time, except for what we decided.
I think so.
Okay. All right, Ethan, I've got my mic on, and we're gonna move on to item high. Elaine, this is you also, discussion and any necessary action on economic development and the creation of a business advisory focus group.
So what I would like the council to consider is, um, uh, to give the city administrator and potential volunteers some guidance as to the goals the council envisions by initiating conversation with local businesses, namely by forming the action committee. There are things that cities can do in the economic development category, and there's things that cities cannot do. So clarification of acceptable goals seems to be important. I also think that a clarification by the council can help with focus and discourage personal opinions as to what those economic development goals might be. The city administrator may help us approach this subject along with our comprehensive master plan. Um, also, as we discussed this item and, and how we hope it, uh, transpires and how it, uh, helps our community grow in this area, um, I know that there are several, uh, council members that express an interest in assisting, and, um, so my question along those lines would be, uh, what would be, uh, would it be proper to authorize one or two to assist the city administrator, so we don't get into a quorum situation? Um, is it better we don't have council volunteers? You know, I just, I just bring this as discussion for clarity of goals and purpose. So, I think maybe the city administrator might help us initiate this conversation.
Well, um, I know we have been, uh, the comprehensive development plan, as we have talked on different occasions, when we've talked about the comprehensive development plan, um, does talk about economic development and how you're going to, um, is, is a priority. Um, so, we've had some conversations, uh, uh, council member Priest and I had, had reached out in a very limited fashion to the business community, um, you know, due to the COVID. And so, um, I think really the, a good, a good strategy would be to engage our business community. And, you know, we can come up with a, a list of questions, facilitate, you know, because we'd already had this idea, facilitate a focus group to see, um, what they would like to see in Rome, to see what they envision how the city could help them. Um, you know, right now, I mean, we're not in a position where we have an EDC or something like that, where we would do an incentive program, um, but maybe it's something as simple as, um, you know, setting up, uh, and we've already done this, by the way, but setting up a development review committee. So when they're trying to, um, come in and buy a business or expand their business, um, you know, they have, um, access to city staff to figure out what the process is and to help make that process smoother. Uh, it, it could be a whole host of things, but I think, um, in our brief conversations, I talked to a few people, and I know you talked to more business, uh, four or five business owners, um, and they were pretty excited about reading the comprehensive development plan and the goals of the city to really go down that path of, okay, how can we promote, actively promote our business community and economic development within the community? So I think it's an exploration to engage, um, you know, a, a sector of our, of our population, our business community. So, we haven't formally done that business focus group, so maybe that's where we start. Um, I think the thing is, who wants to, the last time we talked about this, who wants to be involved in that when it comes to, um, if there's more than two council people, then it becomes a public meeting? So, does council just want to have all these meetings open? And I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, because if you're looking at the business group, I mean, maybe they're not gonna feel comfortable being, you know, on camera, public, public meeting and talking about what their needs are. So, um, I think, you know, just need some direction on who wants to be involved in that on, on council. And, um, I mean, I'm just here to try to, you know, assist.
Ms. Priest?
I know we've talked about it before, and I think, uh, an EDC would be a great idea. Um, talking with other EDCs and COCs and business owners, uh, it would, nothing but help our community, um, especially with just the different businesses coming in, different developments coming in. I think it would be great to, uh, put together a board, and as both of y'all already said, uh, if we do anything more than two, um, two council members, then we're gonna start getting into forum issues and things like that. So I think if we limit it to two of them with our city administrators' assistance, I think that would be a, a, a good deal. So I'd be happy to help you with that if, if that's what the board chooses.
One of the, you know, one of the things that caused me to write this was because, you know, as I was brainstorming about all of that, I go, well, you know, I just, I really had this, this, um, need to help these businesses, um, that are already here, uh, you know, survive the on, uh, the, the new flux of business. And, uh, and we, and we know that new businesses are coming. And then I go, you know, that, that's not your job, that's, that's the business's job, you know? And so I, that's why I was asking for some, um, focus from the city council. We can assist them, but they need to take their own leadership, and we partner with those businesses. But it, it's still important to me that we don't get caught up in all the new stuff, that we don't lose sight of who got us here. And, and needs, these business people are smart. They didn't come here and be successful by being not able to assess the situation, their their market, their own market studies on some levels, customer, as they build customer bases. I mean, all of those important things that businesses do, and they know this community well. And so I think they're a wealth of information for us, you know? I think that they can teach us a lot. And so that's, I just wanted to be sure that the council was really united, you know, in this effort. I didn't want it to be something that, you know, caused anybody any heartburn. I just want us to work together so that we can help these folks that have invested all of their money and their time and their life in this community.
Elaine, thank you so much. I mean, I go around and do videos with them, because their businesses have been affected. So I think we do need to help them, and because their businesses do struggle, because some of them don't get off the freeway, they keep going. So that's the reason why I go by, and we as a city have, you know, filled a couple of them, because we don't go by and do the certificates of occupancies. And, you know, it takes months for us, you know, and some, you know, Sam. But, you know, because they're like, okay, you know, how can I, you know, get them and stuff? And so, you know, I know for one, you know, it took them eight months to get one. So they couldn't put up their sign that said, you know, new ownership. So they were afraid. So stuff like that, so, but, you know, and always go by and go, okay, well, we're going to, you know, cheer you on and stuff. So, but it's really nice and everything, but yay, I'm glad that you're doing it. And if we can help every little business that we can, it would be great. So congratulations to all the help that you can get, so.
Elaine, what, again, like the previous agenda item, what action are you looking for from the council tonight?
Well, part of what I asked for was this discussion, you know, for us to talk about it, for us to brainstorm and kind of have a consensus on where we want to go with this. And, you know, I think everybody's kind of chiming in, and makes me feel better. You know, that part of it. Then I think that Cynthia has set out the steps that we need to take. We've talked about them, we've gotten held up by, you know, world changes and all that kind of stuff. But now we need to go on and move forward. It should be a priority for us.
Could we maybe, I think I'm echoing or something, could we maybe ask that you come, you and Cynthia, whomever, come back to our next council meeting with a firm plan? This is how we'd like to set it up. These are, and I think Josh has volunteered, there may be others. Again, we've got to watch the forum thing, and come back and say, this is what we would like to go forward with, and does the council approve it? Would that work for you and Cynthia?
That works for me, if it works for Cynthia and Josh.
Yeah, partly, I mean, now, part of it, I mean, it would be very a skeletal plan, because part of that, I mean, the business owners themselves are going to contribute to that plan.
Right, but to start with the council and the city that in essence are going to be contacting businesses when we come back, we got to have a starting point, I guess.
So is it Elaine, I guess, so is Elaine and Josh then?
Everybody agreeable to that? Let's start with that. Let's look to see these guys back at our next meeting and go forward from there, if that's okay with Elaine. And now that we have gotten to that point, we're going to stop this meeting, and it is 7:44. We're going to go into executive session. And for anybody that's on video or phone, we have to physically leave the room, because we do have attendees at our conference room. We go into a back room, we discuss what is on our agenda, which is Section 551.071, consult with an attorney pending our completed litigation. Settlement offered to seek advice from the attorney relative to the city of New York and Bywell. We will also be looking at Section 551.074, which is personnel. So we are stopping this meeting at 7:44 and going back into executive session. We'll announce the time when we do that. Thank you.